Good evening. Welcome to the June 25 meeting of the Murfreesboro City School Board. We're glad to have visitors with us in our audience. We're glad to have those that are watching on TV at home. At this time, I'm going to ask you to please stand as our Assistant Superintendent of Instruction, Sherri Arnett, will lead us in our pledge. Followed then by our monitor silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now, on the silence. All right, members of the board, you have seen a printed copy of the agenda. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda as printed?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Ballard. Any question or comment? I see none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
In opposition, and there is none. Thank you. Communication?
We are going to, we have no communications tonight. We're going to go straight to the Best of MCS, if that's all right with you, Mr. Chair.
Good evening, board. I am pleased, as we look at our Best of MCS tonight, that two weeks ago, to announce that the National Beta Convention was held in Savannah, Georgia, and I am thrilled to say that we had several students who qualified to attend this national event. And what's even more exciting is that we had students receive recognition at the national level at the national conference. So I am thrilled to ask Dr. Bullard to come to the podium and to introduce her team that represent our district. Tell us about the accomplishments and introduce us to some of our students who took home these national recognitions.
Good evening, board. Thank you guys so much for having us. You might remember a few months ago, after the state convention, you recognized a large group of discovery school students who placed in the state convention, and we had about 10 students who were able to move forward to that national convention in Savannah a couple of weeks ago. Of those students, we had five who attended, and two of those did place in the top five in the nation. So we are very excited to have with us Rowan Scott, who placed fifth in science in the nationwide convention. I don't know if he'd like to join me. And I'd also like to recognize Margaret Stewart, who placed fourth in poetry at the national convention, but wasn't able to be here tonight. So the amount of work that Rowan has put in to be able to show his, what he knows, and to be successful in that science assessment is no small feat. We're so thankful to him and to the support of his family, and of course, to Ms. Beth Warren, who I'd also like to invite to join me. She is one of our beta sponsors, and she took the reins this year. She attended with those students in Savannah and gave up a part of her summer for that. And we are so grateful for the work that she has done and for you guys taking the time to recognize these individuals this evening.
Rowan and Beth, we are just so thankful for what you do to represent MCS. We are, so do you want to tell them what you, again, you want to tell them how your experience was?
Um, I really like my school. That's definitely, well, that's very true. And then, Beta's really nice because everyone at our school in the Beta Club is friendly. They, they're all just so friendly and nice to be around. And then the conventions, I just really like all of it, especially the Beta Club part.
Yeah.
That's just one of the highlights.
Well, we are so proud of the work he's done and for representing us so well. So we are thrilled to give both you, and we have one for Margaret as well, now she can be here, and Ms. Warren, our Best of MCS recognition for the month of July. We want to say thank you for representing the Best of MCS. So it's always wonderful to represent, I see our students doing great work, and to see it not only at the state level, but at the national level. We just could not be more proud of what they're doing. So thank you, guys. Thank you, Dr. Bullard.
Dr. Bullard, I got a question.
Yes, sir.
How many people attend this national convention?
They are, it's open to schools from across, excuse me, the entire United States. Ms. Beth, do you know how many people attended?
I'm sure, a lot.
There were a lot, so there-
That's the official number.
Yes, the official number is a lot. Just at the state level convention, there were over 1,000 students, and that was just the elementary portion. And then those top qualifiers move on to the national convention.
Awesome.
So Rowan did very well, he and Margaret as both, completing that high nationally. I'd say that's-
They did extremely well. And we had several who placed first in the state of Tennessee, who may have placed really well at nationals, but we only find out the top five places.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Congratulations. All right, public comment, we have none. Consent items. Board, do we have a motion to approve the consent items as printed?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Long. Have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Suddles. Any question or comment? I see none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
In the opposition, and there is none. Thank you. Moving right along. Need to approve this contract?
No, sir.
That's under the consent. Action items. Board Policy 1.501, Visitor Code of Conduct.
Yes. So before I get started and I jump into these policy revisions, I do want to stress that all of the policy revisions before the board tonight are the result of legislative changes from this last legislative session. So any changes that were made were either required by statute or required us to put in place some language, and came directly from the statute or were a separate requirement. So with that, I will say, we are looking at Board Policy 1.501. On first reading, state law now requires school districts to adopt a visitor code of conduct for each facility within the school district. This code must be placed where visitors can see it. It must also contain the name and the board professional responsibility number of the attorney who reviewed it. We have updated our policy to reflect the new requirements, and we'll have those posted prior to the start of next school year. The staff recommendation would be to approve changes to Board Policy 1.501 on first reading.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Ms. Suddles. We have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Ms.
Dodd.
Dodd. Any question or comment?
I have a question, Mr.
Ballard.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Is this a, I think this goes on to say it's going to be posted in each of the schools and on the websites and such. I took a look on the website, and of course, I'm not a great navigator sometimes, but I couldn't peel back and find it. So-
We're still writing it. I had to have a cup of coffee this morning, and dove right in, and I'm hoping to be done with it by the end of this week. Once it's been finalized, we'll put it on the, we'll put it in the student handbook, parent handbook, on the, on or in the front office of each school, and then on the website, too.
Okay, great. Because I think it'll be handy. The easiest way for the parents to see it would be, for the visitors to look there and find it. And although seeing it posted, it would help, but I don't think it would, it'd be easy to overlook where all the postings are. So anyway, that'll, that'll be great when it's posted.
There's also a requirement in both the policy and the law that we not only post it, but have printed copies in the office for parents as well as the school-level contact. So we have several action steps we have to take to get this policy in full swing before the start of the school year, to make sure we are prepared and ready to go.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes. Any other questions? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
In opposition, there is none. Thank you. Policy 3.202, Emergency Preparing is Plan.
State law now requires school district to, ooh, excuse me, maybe two cups of coffee. I need another one. It requires school districts to develop procedures on how staff will determine the cause of fire alarm activations, which include the potential for an active shooter event. This recommended policy change includes a provision on this requirement. MCS will work with local law enforcement and the local fire department to develop specifics of individual procedures. This new law will also require updates to the district's safety plan. The staff recommendation would be to approve changes to Board Policy 3.202 on first reading.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Ms. Suddles. We have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Long. Any question?
Mr. Campbell. So when are we going to be doing this with them? I mean, are we going to have this in place in August when school starts?
We will. So Mr. Barch is working with Mr. Taylor, our safety director, right now to make sure this procedure's in place. I will say this law really came out of a result of the, some of the mass shootings we've had in the last couple of years. I will say both Mr. Barch and Mr. Taylor have been kind of proactively working on something like this, so that we have some clear guidelines for principals of when the fire alarm goes out, to do that quick evaluation before we just automatically exit the building. So we actually had a jumpstart on this, and we are, we feel very good that we will have, ready to train our principals at their back-to-school in-service in July, so that Mr. Taylor can then train school staff, even though the law doesn't go into effect until January, we'll be ready to go in July.
All right. Thank you.
That's wise.
Any other questions? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
In the opposition, there is none. Thank you. Policy 3.400, Shooter Transportation.
A change from the 2023 legislative session goes into effect this July 1. This new state law requires boards to issue certificates to bus drivers. These certificates may be revoked if the bus driver is no longer fit to operate a school bus. In addition, Public Chapter 548 from this legislative session requires notices to be posted on buses stating that only authorized individuals may enter. We've updated our policy to include these additional requirements. The staff recommendation would be to approve changes to Board Policy 3.400 on first reading.
Have a motion to approve the policy?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Ballard. Have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Long. Any question?
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Within the policy, I think it's line number 21, 22, somewhere in there. Now, yeah, the board should require each bus driver to have a physical and mental examination. How does that mental one work?
So we are working through that. That's statutory language. I've spoken with Mr. Rome, and there is a component to, and I'm sure you are aware of that, too, that TDOE physical, T dot physical, that does require us to disclose any medical information or medications, and to the extent that a bus driver is on any type of psycho medication, psychological medication, that's the word I was looking for. Second cup of coffee is really not working for me tonight. But to the extent that you're on any type of medication, you are required to disclose that. So we are looking at incorporating in some form or fashion that TDOE, T dot physical, into the procedures for this. TSBA released their model procedures, and we are looking at modifying those and adopting those in procedure format as well. So we'll have more information soon.
I didn't know, well, okay. I guess I was just wondering, in addition to the DOT, then you got to go see somebody else, or how that was going to be handled?
Our current intent and belief is that we can address both of those components through that Tennessee Department of Transportation form. So that's our, our hope, first and foremost, that we can address it that way.
Yeah, I was going to say, wow, I just had mine, and I don't want to have another go at this thing. Okay. That's all my questions, Mr. Chairman.
Are these evaluations required yearly?
They are.
Good luck. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
In the opposition, and there is none. Thank you. Policy 4.214, Artificial Intelligence.
Public Chapter 550 requires all boards of education to adopt a policy on the use of artificial intelligence for instructional and assignment purposes. MCS has drafted a policy that addresses this law and its requirements. This is a new policy to note, which is why there is no red line, and most of that language comes directly from the state law. The staff recommendation would be to approve Board Policy 4.214 on first reading.
Have a motion to approve Policy 4.214 on first reading?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Ms. Suddles. Have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Dodd. Any question?
I have a question, Mr. Chairman. Could I get an example of what, where we would begin to see the artificial intelligence be making its way into our daily lives and city schools? I mean, is it-
So, yeah, that's a great question, and it's coming very quickly, and it's coming in a lot of different formats. So currently, right now, we have our two instructional technology specialists, Mr. Brooks and Mr. Cheves, are training teachers on several AI tools designed specifically for teachers. So we don't have programs that we are recommending the use of for students at this point, or training teachers on how to use it with students. So that is something we'll look at. Ms. Avisa will be leading this on the technology side. The conversation they've had is she'll actually be putting together a committee herself, our instructional technology specialist, other people who have input on it, because every, any tool that we say we're going to use with students, we have to vet through that committee post, so parents know it's out there, and then make sure our teachers are trained on how we're going to use it if we elect to use it. I will say, because of the nature of the grades that we serve, I don't think it's going to be as prevalent for us as it would be for a high school student or students, where I know the high schools are really dealing with this right now, how to, how to work with it in their daily life. But for us, right now, it'll go through that committee, we'll post to the parents, these are the programs we're allowing students to use, and teachers will be trained on those programs.
I'll see you sometime getting a phone call at 5:00 in the morning from Lisa Trail, and it's not Lisa, it's artificial. Somebody's supposed to created a Lisa Trail in schools for the day.
Well, we're going to cancel because of the heat.
Yeah.
Now, wait, strike that. Don't even put that idea out there.
Okay, thank you.
Miss Bullard?
So I've had questions before from parent about concerns with their students' data and privacy and those sorts of things. So how would we, I know with these tools, there's even kind of a heightened concern, I think, about that. So how do we go about making sure that our students' data and their personal information, if they're engaging with artificial intelligence, is protected?
I'm actually going to ask Ms. Avisa, I don't know if she can come up, and she can speak to this much more fluidly than I will. I will say, part of the policy does require that any tool we use safeguard student data per state law. So that's, that's in our policy already. But I don't know if you want to talk briefly about how we're currently safeguarding student data and how that works.
We have to vet any software that comes in, and we have to actually, through the contract, and she, Lauren reviews that as well, to make sure that they are not exposing any student data. So we can't have a vendor that comes in in any form that would expose student data.
So would it likely be that a student would engage with this through a login they already have through school, like Clever or something like that?
Yes.
Not a separate?
Correct.
Thing where they have an ID?
Yes, if we get to that point.
If we, that's right. So I realize we don't have anything on them.
Right now, it will be strictly teachers. But at that point, yes, it will be controlled through Clever.
Okay, thank you.
If I might add as well, because Ms. Avisa brought up the contract process, but when we have the contract review form that we go through, it's a very robust form, one of the questions on the contract is, does, is student data involved? And if student data's involved, Ms. Bush takes it through an entirely different kind of lens to look at, to make sure that, obviously, safeguarding data is critically important to what we do.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Any other questions? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
In the opposition, and there is none. Thank you. Policy 4.301, Interscholastic Athletics.
Public Chapter 639 now allows homeschool students to participate in interscholastic athletics offered by public schools, subject to the same requirements as other student participants. Policy 4.301 has updated, been updated to reflect this change. I also included an update about the Coach Code of Conduct. That's a former state law change, and that is now incorporated into this policy. The staff recommendation would be to approve changes to Board Policy 4.301 on first reading.
Have a motion to pass Policy 4.301, Interscholastic Athletics.
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Long. We have a second.
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Suddles. Any question?
Mr. Campbell.
Yes, ma'am. Ms. Dodd.
The homeschool students, if they play sports with us, I mean, is there a charge for them, or do they just, is it free to the families, or just?
Go ahead.
They would be subject to the same requirements as our students. So to the extent that our students are charged for uniforms or other fees to participate, they would be subject to the same.
There's not a fee to participate, other than what everybody else is paying?
That's correct. Yes.
Okay.
And this is a result of a new state law specifically addressing this, to open the door for homeschool students to come in and participate with schools if they choose to homeschool.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
In the opposition, there is none. Thank you. Policy 4.403, Library Materials.
Public Chapter 782 revises the Age Appropriate Materials Act of 2022. These changes to state law establish standards for immediate removal of material if it contains content that's defined in TCA 39-17-901. Additionally, if the board does not take action on feedback within 60 days, the state, the student, parent, or guardian, or employee who submitted the feedback may appeal to the State Textbook and Instructional Materials Quality Commission to evaluate the material. Changes are made to Board Policy 4.403 to align with the state law. Staff recommendation is to approve changes to Board Policy 4.403 on first reading. And I will note, Ms. Dodd did call earlier today and ask questions about some of the definitions that were included in that state law. I did include that for the board, as well as some just general scholarship on the topic, so for your nighttime reading.
Have a motion to approve Policy 4.4303, Library Materials.
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Dodd. We have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Ballard. Any question or comment?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am. Ms. Moore.
So I noticed, it's just a procedural question about how this works. It looks like these challenges would eventually end up before us as a board, with a recommendation from the director of schools and the principal of what to do. And so I was just thinking back to our recent, when we were reviewing recommendations from the Zoning Appeals Committee, and we weren't allowed to kind of discuss the substance of it. We just had to give it an up or down vote on the recommendation. Would we be able to talk about, to discuss the substance of the recommendation, or would we be limited, again, to just a yea or nay?
You would be able to discuss this, as long as it was limited to the book. So you would, obviously, the matter at hand, you couldn't discuss, like, you couldn't bring it into, like, it couldn't be, it couldn't become the Board Book Club, right? We couldn't discuss other works, but it would be limited to the book at issue and the director's recommendation, the principal's recommendation, but otherwise, the board could discuss it openly.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions?
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Have we had many complaints or otherwise concerning library materials? As I know, we've seen some in other areas. And I, I seem to remember, we talked about this not too terribly long ago, but um-
We haven't had any formal challenges or requests to remove books since I've been in this position. There are times when occasionally we may have a parent reach out regarding concerns about a book being used in the classroom. And in that situation, Ms. Arnett and her team are really great to work with that family, make sure they understand the work as a whole, why it's in the curriculum. And if the parent still feels the need that it's not something they want their child to read, then they work with the school and the teacher, if possible, to find an alternative assignment for them. I don't know if you want to add anything to that, Ms. Arnett, or you're good. But we haven't had any, any challenges to any of our books in our library since I've been in this room.
Because I think it was, I think the discussion we were having was about books in the classroom. I remember that discussion, and so I just wondered, that's all for me.
I think that dealt with not books sponsored by the school, but brought by students.
Yeah.
In the classroom.
And we have had no, we have had no request to remove any of those either.
Okay.
All right. No other questions? All in favor of the policy, say aye.
Aye.
In the opposition, I see none. Thank you. Policy 4.603, Promotion and Retention.
Public Chapter 829 allows parents and guardians to voluntarily retain their students in grades kindergarten through second grade if the student has a documented academic or behavioral delay, and the parent or guardian believes that retention may benefit the student. This would apply to the 2024, 2025 school year only. It does, it's not retroactive. Policy 4.603 has been updated to reflect these changes. Our staff recommendation would be to approve changes to Board Policy 4.603 on first reading.
I move for approval.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. We have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Long. Any question or comment? I see none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
In the opposition, there is none. Thank you. Policies 5.307, Fiscal Assault Leave.
Previously, fiscal assault leave was only available to teachers. Public Chapter 839 expands this type of leave to include any employee who is absent from assigned duties as a result of physical assault, or other violent criminal acts committed in the course of their employment duties. To them, not by them. I should specify that. This policy has been updated to reflect this change, and now includes a notice requirement pursuant to Public Chapter 915. Our staff recommendation would be to approve changes to Board Policy 5.307 on first reading.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Ms. Suddles. Have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Dodd. Any question or comment? I see none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
In the opposition, there is none. Thank you. Policies 5, I'm sorry, yeah, 5602, Staff Time Schedules.
The United States Department of Labor issued a final rule that makes changes to overtime exemptions under the Federal Fair Labor Standards Act. Murfreesboro City Schools is recommending revision to Board Policy 5.602 to clarify time schedules for full-time, non-exempt employees in preparation for these changes. The staff recommendation would be to approve changes to Board Policy 5.602 on first reading.
Have a motion to approve the policy change.
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. We have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Ballard. Any question, comment? I see none. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
In the opposition, there is none. Thank you. Policy 6.309, Zero Tolerance Offenses.
Public Chapter 882 modifies the current list of zero tolerance offenses in state law. Now, a threat assessment team will determine whether a threat of mass violence is valid before the offense can be classified as a zero tolerance. This policy update, this policy updates aligns with this change. I will note that we have been doing this in Murfreesboro City Schools, so this is not going to be a procedural change for us. This is more of a codification of that state law. The staff recommendation would be to approve changes to Board Policy 6.309 on first reading.
Have a motion to approve the policy change.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Ms. Suddles. We have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Long. Any question or comment?
I'd like to say I'm glad to see this policy changed, amended. The valid threats of mass violence on school property as determined by school district threat assessment team, I like that that's in there now. I'm never a fan of zero tolerance, and just, that's just me, because I think every situation is different, and I think every situation needs to be heard. So I've never been a fan of any zero tolerance policy, but I appreciate this. That's all I'm going to say.
Okay. Any other comment? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
In the opposition, there is none. Thank you. Approving a budget amendment for the General Purpose Fund.
Yes, sir. This amendment is to, is a transfer of previously approved funds within the same major budget category to balance each account for year-end. This amendment transfers a total of $28,275 in our general purpose budget, and $905 in our extended school budget, to recognize this changes in our preliminary salary and trustees- to recognize this changes in our preliminary salary and trustees commission budget estimates to our actual year-end amounts. Each transfer is sustained within the same budget category with no changes to programming. And we are recommending approval as presented.
Have a motion to approve the budget amendment.
I move to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Ms. Settles. We have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Dodd. Any question or comment? See none. All in favor of say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Then there is none. Thank you. Approval of contract for Reeves Rogers.
Yes, we are thrilled tonight to say that the city of Murfreesboro solicited bids for the administrative addition for Reeves Rogers Elementary School. There were four bid respondents with ROMAC Incorporated being the lowest responsive and responsible bidder. So final approval of this contract will be presented to city council on July eleventh, two thousand and twenty-four. The bid form price is two million, seven hundred and ninety-five thousand, eight hundred dollars. And the funding source is through our county shared bonds. And we are eagerly recommending approval to.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Settles. Have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. Any question or comment? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposition? There is none. Thank you. Let's get started.
Right.
Approval of revolution, resolution.
Yes, sir. Federal law allows Murfreesboro City Schools to participate in cooperative purchasing groups to purchase goods for the school nutrition program. This resolution will allow Murfreesboro City Schools to continue to benefit from participating in the commodity buying group for the twenty-five fiscal year. Participation in the cooperative purchasing group allows us, the schools, to increase its purchasing power for competitively procuring goods for the school nutrition program. And we are recommending approval of the resolution as presented.
Have a motion to approve the resolution.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Ballard. We have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Long. Any question? I see none. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposition? There is none. Thank you. Approval of contract curriculum and instruction agreements.
Yes, sir. We have two contracts for curriculum instruction for the FY twenty-five school year that we're presenting to the board tonight. Uh, this is with Imagine Learning and Zainer Blozer. These agreements will provide instructional support and materials for the Murfreesboro City Schools for twenty-four, twenty-five. The cost of the Zainer Blozer agreement is fifty-two thousand, nine hundred and forty-six dollars and seventy-four cents and will provide kindergarten books and first grade books for handwriting. The cost of Imagine Learning is sixty-nine thousand, five hundred and will provide eight hundred licenses to be used by our English language learners. The funding for Imagine Learning is derived from remaining S O three dollars. And the funding for Zainer Blozer is derived from our FY twenty-five general purpose budget. Uh, we are recommending approval of both contracts and we're happy to answer any questions you may have.
Have a motion to approve the contract.
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Long. We have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Settles. Any question? Yes, Ms. Moore.
Um, are these new things that we're doing or is this kind of renewing something that we've used previously?
Uh, I'm gonna let Ms. Arnett talk about the Zainer Blozer, uh, agreement, cause that is new. I will say Imagine Learning is not new. We've used that for the last four years with our English language learners. Too much success, so we're renewing that. But if you want to talk about the Zainer Blozer.
So the Zainer Blozer is a, is, we've used it in third grade. We've always had it in third grade. But based on teacher feedback, they felt like they really needed an additional supplement to what's presently covered in our E L curriculum, just in kindergarten and first grade. So really, it's just from teacher input. So we wanted to kind of follow what they had asked for with that.
That's great. That's good. Thank you. Yeah.
Any other questions? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Opposition? There is none. Thank you. Approval of contract with Genesis.
The special education department is presenting an agreement for special education services to be provided by Genesis Learning Center for board approval. Genesis Learning Center provides a therapeutic day treatment program for our special education students who have been placed in this setting by their I E P team. The total cost of the agreement will be determined by the number of students enrolled in the program. The established daily instructional rate is two hundred and fifty dollars per day, per student. Murfreesboro City Schools would also be responsible for direct contracting costs associated with providing related services. All funding will be provided through our special education general purpose budget. And we are recommending approval of this contract as presented.
Have a motion to approve the contract with Genesis Academy.
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Long. We have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Dodd. Any question? Ms. Settles.
I have a question. Do we do something like this already? Do we have a, or is this a new?
We have, this is, we contracted with Genesis Smith Fairchild for many years. That's right. And so these are students who maybe need, have needs more intensive than our best program can provide.
Right.
Um, so it is specifically for those students based on the I E P team's decision.
So we've been with Genesis for other things or we've always done this specific?
We've always done this specifically with Genesis, yes.
It, this is the first year the contract has come to the board because we changed the contract procedure policy in September of last year that requires contracts over fifty thousand to get board approval. So this would be the first year that you guys are seeing that contract.
Thank you. That was my.
Other question? Mr. Ballard.
So how many students do we, sir, does Genesis take care of for us?
This past year, we had six students enrolled at Genesis Academy for us. And currently, our expectation is all six will be returning next year.
Okay.
I will say the contract also, we also pay not just for that two hundred and fifty dollars a day to services. If that child requires a one-on-one aid, uh, we would pay for that as well. And we contract with Rutherford County Schools to pay for the bus transportation, uh, for those students because Genesis serves not only Murfreesboro City, but also Rutherford County Schools.
And where are they located?
They are actually located on Church Street.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Or off of Church Street, I should say.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Opposition? There is none. Thank you. Approval of res, resolution cooperative.
Yes, sir. State law allows Murfreesboro City Schools to enter into a master cooperative purchasing agreement through purchasing programs with the approval and consent of the local body. This reg, resolution will allow Murfreesboro City Schools to continue to benefit from purchasing from national programs to include the Byboard National Purchasing Cooperative, Omnia Partners, the Interlock Local Purchasing System, and Sourcewell for the two thousand and twenty-five fiscal year. By leveraging the collective power of multiple institutions, these programs enable us to secure substantial discounts on essential goods and services. In addition to the direct financial savings, cooperative purchasing programs offer a considerable reduction in administrative burden on our staff. Uh, we have approved these as needed in years past. I think this is the first year we are kind of proactively approving all of them. So we don't have to wait until we have a purchase before we move forward. Um, but with that, we are recommending approval as presented.
Have a motion to approve the resolution.
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. Have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Ballard. Any question? I see none. All in favor of say aye.
Aye.
Opposition? There is none. Thank you. All right. Reports and information. Update on summer construction.
Yes, I asked Mr. Barch as we have quite a bit going on this summer and now, believe it or not, this is the end of June. We're halfway through it. And so I thought it'd be a great opportunity for Mr. Barch to talk a little bit to the board about what all we have happening at our school sites.
Hey, I'm gonna, um, a good evening, board. Uh, I'm gonna start out with, uh, a couple pictures here.
I always like it when you have pictures with your presentation.
That's right. All right. Well, I'll try more. This is, uh, the Mitchell Nielsen Playground. Uh, that was completed, uh, just a couple of weeks ago. And we're working on the, uh, the grass for that right now. This recent heat wave has not been grass friendly.
No.
But, uh, we're working on it. But there, and then there's, well, yeah, wrong way. There we go. There's a better shot of it for you.
Oh, that's beautiful.
And, uh, this, the sun shade was a, a kind of an addendum. And so we appreciate being able to do that. And I know a lot of people are gonna appreciate
Yeah.
that sun shade. And so, uh, I want to thank the city for working with us on that. There were some engineering things that had to be worked out. And, uh, it was the, the, it was just a great process and it's beautiful. The picture doesn't really do it justice. If you have any questions about that, but that, um, anyway, now let me get into some of the other ones. I also want to thank, uh, one of the things I've learned in the past eleven months is with these projects, it's, uh, quite a big team. And for example, on the Casey Lane, Irma Seago, Black Fox Towers, you know, when you pull things apart, you end up finding more things to fix. And when the cooling tower is down, we gotta hurry up and fix those things. And, um, so, you know, Ms. Bush and Mr. Owens and our, uh, Adam, our purchasing agent, and Larry and Brandon, of course, we're running meet, we're meeting all over town. Uh, and sometimes at the same time. And I just appreciate all the folks that have been jumping in and trying to pull off all these jobs at the same time. So it's, it's been a lot of fun. I, I love it. Uh, anyway, those, if, uh, you can see that those, all those, the cooling towers are going. Uh, the Reeves Ro, Reeves Rogers has got a lot of work, some exciting work and a lot of updates going on. And that's gonna continue with sport courts. It's gonna have a whole new look. And we're excited about that. Uh, Mitchell Nielsen's got a lot of work going on as well. Um, bleachers will be coming in and Discovery Sport Courts will be finishing up just briefly and just in a few weeks. Uh, just had a, uh, update on that just before I got here. I was actually gonna stop and get a picture and then I saw the traffic and I was like, Mom, we're gonna have to wait. Um, there was something on Church Street, but anyway.
Always someone.
Um, Casey Lane pre-K, if you get a chance to go by there, you got a brand new parking lot. That, that's like, they kind of put icing on the cake of all the things that the city has done for us, uh, there. Uh, Hobgood Ceiling is working. They're going through that real well and, and cruising through. And that, uh, and then we learned, by the way, the contract with ROMAC for Mitch, for the Reeves Rogers is one we've worked for, worked with for Mitchell Nielsen last year.
Yeah.
Uh, when they did their ceiling. And so we're excited to work with them on the Reeves Rogers, uh, administration addition. Um, the scanning systems are gonna be operational in just in a few days, uh, at all the, all the schools that didn't have them. So we're excited about that. And I think that's it. If there's any questions. Oh, another big one is we've started the planning stages of turned in the paperwork for the transportation and maintenance facility.
Wow.
Oh.
Wow.
You saved that.
Yes. We'll see how that goes.
Where, where will that be on the present site or a different site?
That's a good question. It's, I'm, I'm kidding. It's not gonna be on the present site. We don't fit on the present site. And there's some other things that are causing us to have to move from that site.
And when Mr. Barch said he submitted paperwork, it's the kind of, the document, we worked with the city to kind of officially kind of start the conversations about programs and stuff. There's still several pieces we have to work through with that, but it really gets it. We've had multiple conversations with the city about that and it gets it kind of officially on the radar so we can continue to have those conversations.
I just didn't want to get behind schedule with, down the road in the next few years. That's why we kind of kicked that can to get ready.
That's been a, an ongoing project for some time, hasn't it? Bus transportation facility.
Yes, sir. Uh, before Old Raw Creek opened, we were talking about that. So yes, sir.
Yeah. I think when I first got on the.
So right now, the, the key point is to find a location then, all right? Is that what?
Yes, sir.
So who's scouting that out?
That would be when, we're gonna be getting together to have that conversation. We'd definitely be working with the city on that one. But it's, I've gotten many texts from Dr. Duke, you know, who's driving around town and says, hey, Don, what about this spot? So, yes. So anyway, then we're researching spots.
What are you looking for specifically?
Uh, we need about ten acres. That, that would, that's kind of what we, yeah, that's what we need, is ten acres.
Will that be for transportation and maintenance?
That would be the plan. Yes, sir. That, uh, just, we gotta have the conversations with, with the city and they've been working with us very well and developing those relationships. So that's the plan. Hope, that's, that's what we're hoping for.
Seems like we'd have that. Well, could we? Are we able to work with commercial realties to?
It, it, I, we, I really gotta lean on the, uh, with the folks in the city planning on that, on how that's gonna play out.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Oh, I had one other question. I'm sorry. Can you remind us on the Reeves Rogers project what the, the completion date is targeted to be?
Uh, almost exactly a year to the date.
Okay.
They're shooting for around the fourth of July. And, uh, we're on, we're on track. Uh, Johnson, Lyle Lynch with Johnson and Bailey and the city and Warren and many other people have helped us, has really worked hard on keeping on, keeping on our, it was a very aggressive timeline. Uh, I was shocked, to be honest with you, that they're, and we're able to maintain it so far.
Great.
We're close.
So far.
So the.
Mike, I'm sorry.
These collective contracts that we've been putting together, is that helpful for, for your projects as well?
Yes, ma'am, definitely.
Okay.
That expedites, uh, that, that's a huge, uh, helps out quick to get things done quicker if we need to.
Touch through the red tape.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah.
If I can add, Mr. Chairman, he did talk about the, uh, the, the scanning cards at all of our schools that are, we done at the end, which we're really excited about to have that done. Mr. Taylor set a fantastic job working with Mr. Barch. And as he said, Ms. Bush, Mr. Owens, all the people it takes to do these projects, cause it is quite the, the, um, the system in place. But I just, we, we've had several, uh, school security things that we are completing as of the end of this fiscal year that we're really excited about. And I point that out because we started having these conversations a year and a half ago. We had mapped out three-year plans to get them done. And we have them done all within a year. So.
Look at us.
Uh, kudos to Mr. Barch and his team for getting that done.
How about the, the film on the glass? Is that coming along rapidly?
Yes, sir.
That's awesome.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right. Director's update.
Uh, just a few updates tonight. Um, believe it or not, like I said, it's hard to believe we're already at the end of June, but here we are at the end of June. So summer school programming ends this Thursday. So summer school came quickly and it's over quickly. So after four fantastic weeks, I think Dr. Bullard has already slipped out, done a great job administering that program uh, with guidance and its support from Ms. Arnett and her entire team. So just thank you to all of our summer school teachers who go their entire, or worked, I should say go, we did pay them, who worked the entire month of June. Uh, but that ends this Thursday, so two days left. We're excited about that. They're post-testing right now, which is a requirement from the state, take a post-test. And for third grade students, that'll determine what their next step is. Do they require tutoring in fourth grade or can they move on with no further restrictions? Uh, I also wanted to say we do expect fourth grade adequate growth scores back on July first. So that's for students who were in third grade last year, were promoted for tutoring. They have to obtain adequate growth on their fourth grade T cap assessment. We have still not got those scores back yet. We will find that out tentatively July first. And then we'll immediately start communicating with those families as well. So we are looking forward to that. But other, it's really going very smoothly. Um, again, Ms. Arnett, Dr. George, stay on top of that to make sure we have those, that information. Uh, the final update I'll have is I want to give congratulations to now very soon to be Dr. Maria Johnson, who defended her dissertation today.
Right.
So, super proud of Ms. Johnson, uh, and, uh, looking forward to attending an August graduation. Is that correct? August tenth. So she officially defended her dissertation today and did a great job. And we're, we're, just want to say congratulations to her.
Congratulations.
Is that hard to, was it hard to defend?
It was not.
What was it about? What was your dissertation on? What was your dissertation on?
Uh, it was on the beliefs and actions of equity publicist principles that are obtaining academic growth for all students.
Say that again real fast.
Put it in our language terms. Go back to nineteen fifty and say that again.
We also are doing an excellent job.
Okay.
What they're doing. So really researching what they are doing to ensure that we're in that competition, that profession.
I love that.
That is beautiful.
And you proved that they're doing an excellent job as we already know.
Yes, sir.
But the committee didn't know it. Well, I wanted to hear. Okay. Thank you very much.
You kind of had an easy road with that one, cause we're just so perfect at Murfreesboro City Schools. So I know we were already doing it.
Mr. Campbell, and I'm sorry, I did have one other announcement. It wasn't in my notes, but Ms. Trail did pass out the, uh, ribbon cutting invitations. Like I said, you approved the contract tonight. Uh, the, um, city council will see it Thursday, July eleventh. And assuming all goes well with the city council, we will break ground. We will break ground that next day. Uh, and we're not gonna, we're gonna go straight from that approval to let's get some shovels in the dirt and let's get going.
And will we be giving city council these limitations?
We will make sure city council get those as well.
After they.
Maybe, maybe after the meeting.
I'll pass them out after the meeting.
All right. Well, thank you very much. Anything else coming for this board?
Yes, sir.
All in favor of a motion to adjourn, say aye.
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 Oh, bye.